Council members that could join us last week in Chattanooga. Let's roll that tape, Chris.
Hold on a second.
Wait, Joe. Mr. Fivas.
I'll tee it up.
Please do. Jack Nicholson.
Nicholas.
You know, the mayor and some council members had some opportunity and some staff to receive this award. We've already talked about the wonderful job of the project. We do have Brian Beck here, who was the project manager on this. Brian Gilbert, who was another engineer that did countless hours of work. David Shealy, making sure the traffic went well. Seth did a great job of, we just sent him as a bulldozer to talk to anyone in the public. But then Tommy Myers and his Public Works team did an unbelievable job of doing that. I've mentioned this before, but it was probably one of the most complicated projects. You just look at it, it's a street, and you take it out and you put it back in, is that that was, it was some of the best engineering work, and I think we should honor them for trying to do that. And as we've discussed before, the engineering work is that you have an eight-inch slab of concrete with field stone in there, about 100 years old, that sits underneath that road, that we could not have afforded to take all of that out. And just getting the drain, any time you go up on a road, is that the road starts being higher than all the buildings that are already there. So you have all the doors, the water slanted down at the doors, and there were countless hours of meetings and time and effort to work on that. And just the pure engineering and getting it down to making sure the water would drain to, you know, half a percent on trying to make some really flat areas to work was amazing. The traffic, David Shealy deserves a lot of the credit for the traffic out there, that it worked, seems to be working pretty well. I think it works better than the four lanes, actually. The technology that we also implemented with some of your photo detection.
Is that you don't?
Makes it much more effective. But all in all, it was just a great project. But just our staff that were out there working under, you know, tight time constraints and a lot of pressures, figuring out that at any moment T-DeC could have said that they're coming in to start paving and doing all that. So when we show the video, then I want them to come up and get another picture taken with that. And I just wanted to, as you look at the project, I wanted you to understand that this was really an engineering marvel of what our engineering staff pulled off. So go ahead and...
Now you can go.
No, that's not it. Don't buy that, Chris. Look at that traffic, David, it's flowing so... Oh, well, it was.
Before he took it out.
How funny. Township.
The city of Cleveland transformed its historic Inman Street corridor into a more pedestrian-friendly, connected, and vibrant destination. We developed Inman Street, had been a decades-long community vision. To make it a reality, city officials prioritized communication with residents, businesses, and stakeholders throughout the project. Regular updates ensured a smooth construction process and earned strong public support. The street was redesigned from four lanes to two, with added turn lanes and expanded sidewalks. Streetscape improvements included safer crosswalks, better traffic flow, and enhanced access for pedestrians and citizens. New landscaping and a focus on walkability created a welcoming downtown atmosphere that encourages foot traffic and boosts local commerce. The project also included a major refresh of Johnston Memorial Park, Cleveland's oldest public park, with new pathways, a restored gazebo, and over 1,100 new plants. The park has served as both a community gathering space and a visual anchor for downtown. The city saved time and money by using in-house staff and repurposing existing infrastructure. Project improved city service efficiency, spurred building renovations, and helped attract new businesses, generating increased tax revenue without raising costs for residents. By blending thoughtful design, fiscal responsibility, and public engagement, Cleveland brought new energy to its historic downtown and delivered a long-awaited transformation with lasting impact. And why the Tennesseun Municipal League is pleased to recognize the city of Cleveland with an Excellence in Economic and Community Development Award.
Excellent. And while Joe's coming back up and the staff come for a picture, 345 cities were in consideration, and only two won the Award of Excellence. So I'm very proud of the team for this great achievement.
Come on up there, man.
We'll just stand. We'll stand behind him. How about that? Yeah, don't put me behind Beck.
Just remember, Joe.
Kidding.
When something goes wrong with it, Brian Beck was the project manager. You get all the credit now, but later.
That's right.
Can you see?
I think so.
Can you see the camera?
There we go.
I need that stool.
On three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Go Team. Go Team Cleveland. That was our only item under special presentations and public comments, so that does allow me to offer the opportunity. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council? I understand, I think I have one person that's wanting to speak about skate parks. If you'll come to the podium and identify yourself for the record, thanks for coming.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Vaughn. I am here in representation of the City of Cleveland's Active Youth. For a while, we have been having some issues with a lot of the, I would say just Tinsley Park. It's been, in a better word, destroyed for quite a while now. And a lot of us are, with me and my friends, we're very active people. We like to play basketball, we like to go skate, we have hobbies that we have turned into things that we can do on the side, we can have fun after work. A lot of us get off at like 10 o'clock, and we love to go to the skate park. It's become a big part of our lives. I actually work at the skate park. I work at the skate shop at the mall. It's really fun. We've been raising money for both the chat and the Cleveland Skate Park to try and see if we can just get something done wherein that it's not a mess, we can reduce injuries, that sort of thing, because there's such wear and tear on all the equipment. And I don't know if any of you have been down to Tinsley recently, but that entire park is gone. We are unable to go anywhere currently, and I understand that's not like in all of y'all's power. But it's been a little bit of an issue as of recently because we have nowhere else to go. We don't want to go to the streets, we don't want to be a bother. There are places that we have gone around here, actually, and it's really fun. We'll go and take pictures, we'll have fun, we'll try and learn new tricks, that sort of thing. But it'll turn into like, somebody will come out, be like, hey, you can't be here. We'll be, oh, okay, we will leave, we'll get out of here, we will not come back, we do not want to be a bother to anyone. We go to the chat skate park, that is also being destroyed currently. It is a little difficult to find a place, along with all the constructions going on recently. It's really cool, and it's really cool to see everybody building new things, and we get a lot of really new opportunities in Cleveland. However, a lot of it's being taken over by pickleball courts, which I have never played, but is apparently a very enjoyable sport, and I should probably try it out. But finding a place to reconnect and re-enjoy these activities that we did really enjoy doing is a big part of our lives. I did a whole report in college about the disappearance of third places. I created an entire, I'm a graphic designer and a photographer, so I went and I created this whole brand opportunity to rediscover the opportunity of, instead of going home or to work, you have a third place where you can go and enjoy time and reconnect with your community. And unfortunately, everywhere that we are able to go has some sort of payment access, and we're all poor. We don't have money, we're all teenagers, you know? But finding a place wherein that we could enjoy time as a community and participate in the activities and emotions and everything that we enjoy doing is really important to us. We'll go to Walmart and skate in the parking lot. That is not allowed, we will not do that. That also brings me on to the topic of car meets. I don't have, I have a Volkswagen Passat, okay? I'm not going to car meets, but I do photography for them. And a lot of what has happened there is that they will go into these spaces where it is becoming potentially a hazard or dangerous for other people to exist in the same space. I don't want injuries, I don't want to be a bother, I hate being a bother. But finding a place where we could engage in these activities would be so, so cool and very important to all of us. It's not even just the youth. Like, I'm almost 20. There's teenagers, there's kids that come in the shop all the time that are like, I want to learn how to do this, I want to learn, I want to get in this passion, because my dad used to do it, and he's trying to teach me. They don't have anywhere to go.
You know there's a proposed new location?
I do know about that. I was actually here to ask about that, and I wanted to know what the potential of that is.
Where are we at with that, Joe? There's going to be a presentation, we'll talk about it.
That's fantastic.
Right after your time.
Thank you.
And we're using skaters to consult with this all.
Yeah, we have, at Lea University, Professor Aaron Johnson, who has been lending us a helpful hand to give us a design. I mean, there will be a brand-new skate park, and we have a grant opportunity that we're going to talk to them about, we'll include a skate park with some pictures, that will be submitted as a grant. That, the one way or another, we're committed to having a brand-new facility. The one we have right now, the equipment...
It's not safe.
Needs to be replaced.
We've had a lot of friends go to the hospital.
We'll need to start over. If there's anyone that wants to be a part of the working group, we're happy to have them as a member, then just come there and talk to us. We have some opportunity to get some funding to really go all out for what we want to do. So I think that, I think there's been no question that, from the council's perspective, that there's some strong desire to really approve everything that you articulated, especially the skate park.
Thank you. That's really cool. Thank you so much. Is that all you need from me?
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. We're very grateful. More importantly, for your presentation, but I would also like to thank you for your presence, because it's so important for people to not only have a desire, have something that they want to speak to, but to come before the city council at barely 20 years of age and speak. Yeah, I'm very, very thankful, and tell your friends, they're always welcome.
Of course. We were all planning on coming, but we all have work, so. I got a lot.
We all have jobs, too.
Really?
We really do.
I thought this was a hobby.
Well, that's what Mrs. Brooke says.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. All right, anyone else wishing to speak before the council at this time? Seeing none, we will go on to our longest-serving city manager's report, in addition to some other things we're to talk about. Congratulations, Mr. Fivas, for reaching the nine-year mark, becoming the longest-serving city manager in the history of the city of Cleveland. Congratulations, sir.
No one was supposed to know that, so someone's, someone's going to get in trouble for spilling the beans. Thank you so much. We want to get right into it, and I concur with your thoughts and appreciate Sarah coming and bringing her thoughts to the meeting today. We do have an opportunity that Dustin and Tommy's going to come up and talk to you about. Basically, it's the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant, and I think we have a pretty good opportunity this time. We've kind of been waiting in line. Last year, pretty much all the money went to East Tennessee to rebuild some of the parks that went to, were lost in some of the hurricane. So we hope that we have a great presentation. Dustin's going to come up and talk about this. This is a very quick grant. We feel it has to be turned in in the next couple of weeks, but I think that it meets some of our priorities that we've talked about in the community. So Dustin, why don't you come up and talk to us about what this grant is about? I'll do that.
Thanks. And Dustin, before you begin your presentation, this is on the three o'clock agenda for the council to take action.
Yes, to bless. We are looking at applying this year for a Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee grant to create an upgrade Greenway Park significantly. As you'll see on slide number one, they have awarded 26 awards since 2018. That's about three or four per year. And it opens August 1st and closes at the end of August each year, and we are hoping that this year we can crack the code on the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant. Page two, we are recommending the city staff to upgrade Greenway Park because of how centrally located and visible it is. It's one of the most well-used parks in the city of Cleveland, and there's room, we believe, for expansion and reimagining this park. In the park's plan, that, the master plan that you heard about before this meeting, it identified the playground at Greenway Park as in poor condition, and if you've been there lately, you know it's in need of major upgrades. And this park, we believe, has a really strong fit with the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant purpose. So the next page, why Greenway Park? We already own the land, the proposed project meets all the grant requirements. This is an extremely active park with high-foot traffic. The impact would serve youth, family, skaters, all ages. It would be one of the most highly visible locations near civic and commercial destinations in the city of Cleveland, and it builds on existing amenities and adds high-demand features. What are the proposed improvements? We are looking at doing a splash pad adjacent to the current pavilion to completely redo the playground and add a skate park at that location as well. Those are the three big-ticket items that we're looking to do with this. And the next couple of slides show examples of Blue Cross Blue Shield projects across the state. This was one of the first ones that they did in Memphis. Next slide. The skate park on the left is something that would be beyond epic if Blue Cross Blue Shield steps up to the plate and brings resources that they have to bear. It would be better than anything, it would be awesome. I don't want to say better than anything we could do, because we can do some great stuff, too, but it would elevate what we were able to produce above what we think we could without their help. And then we would like to do a really nice splash pad there, like the one at Coolidge Park. So what we're asking you to do today is to approve us moving forward with an application for these three items there at the Greenway Park. And what we will do next is finalize the site, do community engagement, refine the design, produce detailed cost estimates, and then submit the grant by the end of August. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, do you feel pretty confident, Dustin?
I do. We had good feedback from our project proposal last year, but like Joe said, the vast majority of funding went to Irwin, Tennessee, where they were hit really hard by Hurricane Helene. And if it weren't for that, we had a very strong application last year. But this project is more centrally located, highly visible, the kind of foot traffic there that we've seen them fund this type of project in other communities. I'm not saying that we didn't get it last year because of the location, I'm just saying this is, this project location kind of epitomizes what they've funded in the past.
Right. In relation to the park itself, where would the skate park be?
To my understanding right now, we had dreamt up something behind the restrooms, kind of adjacent to, closer to the property that the school owns. We, I don't know how the legal terminology there is, but back behind there, there's an open area that we feel like that could fit really nicely in.
Technically, we own it, and we allow the schools to use it.
Okay, that's the technical.
Not to put too fine a point on that. Dr. Elliott, with all due respect.
Other questions?
Well, all of this property should be able to fit on what we own. There's more space over there than what we're saying.
Correct. Vice Mayor.
I just wondered, Joe, and Jody, y'all are here today. Would it help your application if you had a letter of endorsement from the school board, since this is adjoining property? And do you think this is something the school board might be willing to do? That you endorse the project as your next-door neighbor?
If it will help, we'll be happy to help out with that.
We would love to get a letter from the schools about this.
And I'm just hoping that Blue Cross Blue Shield understands that we are customers of theirs.
Yes, we.
Yes, we are.
That's the first thing you put in the office.
Good, absolutely. That needs to be on page one, and then page two can be our letter of support from our friends at the school board.
So one thing is that what we do, I mean, the vice mayor asked a good question about the schools. We don't feel that there will be too much of an impact from the park to the schools during most of the time, or any of the time they're in. But what we will need is that the splash pad will bring a good number of people. So just in those summer months, July, August, we would probably ask for some help on additional overflow parking in their parking lot over there, and that's probably, that's probably the only technicality that we would potentially see during the afternoon.
Councilman Goff, did you have a question?
I was just curious on the Blue Cross timeline, if they accept a grant and then when they actually fund them.
So they make announcements, quote, "no later than February 1st," but the first month or two of the following year, the application's made, and then they begin planning with the cities municipalities that get these grants to implement the project that year. So 2026, we would hope that this could be a reality by the end of the year. Maybe a little later if there were hiccups along the way, but announcements, February 1st, complete ASAP.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Tommy? Councilwoman McKenzie?
I just had a question in relation to the young lady that spoke earlier, and this is in 2026. Joe, where can they escape from now till then? Since, because it's not going back to Tinsley exactly, right?
Yeah, well, at some point, well, we probably won't be done with that Tinsley Park until late fall, so it'll be closed, so there might be a gap there at that time. But we could certainly work with the community on that. There might be a gap of a few months where they're under construction, but we can work on any option.
You're talking about right now? There's construction right now?
Yeah.
After a couple of months, until this park is done, where would they escape? At Tinsley?
Well, that facility would probably be, well, our first plan would be to remove that and start ready to do something at...
Greenway.
Greenway. Greenway. Starting construction pretty much right away. If we get the grant, that might delay it a few more months and consulting with them, but we would want to start construction right away. If we don't get the grant, we would start construction immediately on word that we didn't get the grant. So we're going to construct it, either it'll be their money or our money.
Right, but from now till then?
You're saying from now till then, Joe, where can the kids go?
Where can they go and skate now? Anywhere, you know, in any of our parks, or?
Wherever they can find a skate, I mean.
So the city doesn't have anything other than one that was at Tinsley Park for them?
Do we need to add, under new business, the approval of the funding for this grant?
I think it is on consent calendar, is our call. It is. Yes, consent M, authorizing staff to submit an application for Blue Cross Blue Shield. So affirmative on consent would prove.
Is there, can you have any ideas for us on how to bridge that?
I don't know unless, I mean, I don't know how easy or what would be involved in constructing something temporary. I don't know. Has anybody else got any ideas?
Yeah.
Why don't we ask the expert?
You know, we have a slab on that property that we're buying that could be used.
Yeah, we can find something temporary and move the equipment. If we can find a safe area that makes sense, we will try to provide an alternative option, because we will have the equipment that will be able to be moved. It will be, it's not going to be as nice as what we will have, but at least there'll be some opportunity.
Yeah, temporary.
Does it need to be on a slab? Because I was thinking like at the South Cleveland Community Center, you've got the ball field out there that isn't used much.
It would have to be on a slab.
I think so.
Yeah, I don't skate very well if it's on a slab.
But I'm just thinking, you know, things you could maybe do there.
I want a picture of that, Council.
Well, if we can find an alternative that's cost-effective and safe, we will implement it.
I would just ask that that be brought back to us in a few weeks, so we can kind of keep up to see what's available, what could be done.
We've got a hand up back here.
Ms. Vaughn, if you would like to respond?
If you'll come to the podium. If that is too much work?
If you'll come to the podium, please, if I can hear you for the record.
If that is too much work, we are entirely okay with just skating around here. It's close, there's sidewalks, there are like slabs that they can do tricks, I'm not very good at tricks, they can do tricks off of, but like, if that is too much work or it's too much effort to find a temporary place, we are completely okay with permission to just be around the city as to not be a bother to anyone.
We will do everything we can to provide... We will do everything we can to provide an alternative site, as long as it's safe and cost-effective. I mean, we have the equipment, we just need to move it and set it up somewhere. It's just to find in the right location.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And thank you, Mr. Tomney. This could not be coming at a better time. Mrs. Brooks took our grandchildren to the Athens Splash Pad and very much is asking the mayor when Cleveland's going to get one. So, thank you, Mr. Tomney. All right. Back to the city manager, the longest-serving city manager in the history of Cleveland.
Somebody's definitely in trouble for this.
Have, coming up, we have a few ribbon cuttings. We have the Gott Street, Inman Street project, which goes from Mosby Park down around. We plan on having a little ribbon cutting there right before our next council meeting. Then, a totally separate project with a separate funding source. You know, the Gott Street was paid with an 80% grant. And then, I think, the state gave us another couple hundred thousand dollars. Robert did some good work groveling with TDOT. We appreciate that. Central Avenue was a project that was paid by CDBG mostly. And so, we'll have ribbon cutting with that. Then, I want to make a change. The strategic planning session is supposed to be at 12:00 noon on the 22nd, not the 25th. So, it'd be, it would just be a regular council meeting and just, so, and we'll figure out if it'll be here or somewhere else. So, that's a typo. So, that should be September 22nd. And we'll try to fit in the Blythe Oldfield, Footsaw Field. That looks really good. They have the lines cut in. Probably need another month to put up the fence and make some other upgrades over at Blythe Oldfield Park. Then, we have the Mouse Creek Greenway Extension. That's on East Circle. It's one that's been done for a while, but we haven't been over there to really appreciate that. That was a good addition. The Greenway Board will likely join us. And then, tentatively, we have the Jim Sharp Park, October 27th. It should be done. We were out talking to them the other day, so they're getting very close. And then, we also wanted to go out and see the community garden, and we're waiting for the right time and weather to be able to go out and do that. Anyone have any, nothing, and you haven't looked at everything. If you have issues with any of these times, they're all movable. They can all be moved and processed. Just let us know as we go. Just wanted to give everyone an idea on some of the stuff that we've completed and ready to go. With that, that's really all I have today for work. If you want me to start the agenda, I'm happy to, Mr. Mayor.
That's good. Unless the council has any comments or questions? Let's proceed.
At the three o'clock meeting, we have several public hearings. And the first one will be here, comments and requests on Springbrook Community Developers LLC, looking for consideration ordinance to amend PUD 4, located on 25th Street. On 6B, we have another public hearing. Here, public comments concerning requests by Dustin Jinks for consideration of ordinance to zone 3.27 acres from IH, heavy industrial, to R2, so it's down zoning. A lot of this area has residential next to it, so certainly, we're, by leaving it IH, you have a potential for having incompatible zonings of IH next to other current residencies that are close to there. So, this will help alleviate some issues in the future. A lot of times, between those incompatible uses, you have noise issues, other type of issues associated with heavy industrial. Item 6C, here, public comments concerning requests by Alvin Calhoun to zone, rezone 0.18 acres on 800 Harrison Pike from CH to R3. There was a little house between the gas station and some apartments that are right on Bauer Lane right there. They have demoed that, and they're going to build some additional apartments right there, from what our understanding is. Item 6D is to hear public comments concerning the request by the City of Cleveland for ordinance to amend Cleveland City Municipal Code, Appendix C, Delete 1, Table 1, Zoning Districts. Robert, you want to tell us what that is?
Sure.
You can do the next three items.
Regarding the table, it's just, you find sometimes a table that's been in existence for a long time, since the zoning ordinance was adopted. And then, they've made some changes to the ordinance throughout the years that didn't necessarily jive with what the table said. So, what we're doing is deleting the table for now, and we will be bringing back a table once we've got it all cleaned up. But right now, there's some contradictions, and I keep finding new ones, and I just don't like, as you guys know, those contradictions to exist. So, we're going to delete the table, get rid of it for now, but we are already working on getting a new one back in that will be much clearer. The next item is, let's see, where are we at?
E.
E, okay.
On the page.
Yes, so, the R3, single-family lot width. In R3, there's a lot width minimum of 75 feet, but in R2, and R1, in R2, for a single-family, it's 50. So, we're going to make the R3 the 50 as well, because by deduction, the way this zoning ordinance works, the things that are allowed in R2 would be allowed in R3. So, we're going to clear up that. It's been enforced that way, but it doesn't reference it in the ordinance. We want to be very clear and say, this is what the minimum lot width is for single-family houses. It'll stay 75 feet for anything above a single-family. And then, F on the item, to hear public comments concerning requests, City of Cleveland, Appendix C, zoning ordinance to revising Section 2.3.1, use is allowed. This is involving the cluster development standards that we've talked about. Yes, sir.
Going back to D, a single-family will be 75 feet?
No, it's 50 in R3, and it's always been enforced that way, but the code, the zoning ordinance, doesn't actually list it.
Okay.
In R2, it's 50 for a single-family, 75 for a duplex or above.
Okay.
In R3, it was the same. It's just, it didn't list it, so we want to make sure it's clear. Thank you. And regarding the cluster development, the Planning Commission was asked to look at this. And what this does is limit the density within R1 when you do a cluster development to the R1 standard. So, you can do the same amount of units, it's just a different style of development. And that wasn't always the case previously. So, if there's any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
On the consent agenda, we have items that we, the council has already considered at previous meetings concerning a request by Peggy Pesterfield on Peerless Road from R1 to R2. Item 7B is zoning ordinance 2538, requested by Bill Sanders for rezoning out at Pleasant Grove, 1.85 acres on Pleasant Grove Road. Item 7C, passage of zoning ordinance 2537, which is another request from Bill Sanders regarding 14 acres located at Pleasant Grove Road from FAR to CH. Item 7D, ordinance 2540, concerning a request by the City of Cleveland for consideration of proposed amendment to expand the IGC. D, actually, as we talked about the last meeting, extends the gateway to these new acreage out in that direction. Item 7E is amending the purchasing procedures relating to competitive pricing and fixed assets. Our current bid that we just get quotes are, as things have gotten more expensive, is usually, it was always 1,000. This amends that so that we can do, we don't have to get actual written quotes. We get verbal quotes from 1,000 to 5,000, and then extends our other limit from, I think, 5,000 to 10,000. And essentially, it just gives us flexibility when doing that. We still, Kristi Powers will still go through each and every item. If there's a request for under 1,000, we still make sure that there was the three verbal quotes, and you have to document it. It just doesn't, it's a little bit less of an informal standard. Item 7F, Resolution 2767, authorizing the City of Cleveland to participate in Public Entity Partners Judy Housley Safety Partnership Matching Grant Program. Item 7G is authorizing the mayor to sign a final summary change order relating to Gott Street. I think that is finalizing, closing that project out. Resolution 2569, authorizing the City of Cleveland to participate in the Public Entities Partners Conservation Matching Grant Program. Item I is a bid extension for a one-year extension with physician services contract for drug and alcohol testing. That's our mandatory testing that we utilize. Bid out previously. Item J is a bid report, stormwater improvements at 20th Street and Michigan Avenue. Item K, have a change order. We've had a, this just finishes off our, we still have some money left over from our downtown grant, and we have some intersections that still need to crosswalks, and this finishes that off. Item I, motion authorizing the mayor to sign a right-of-way dedication and development agreement with First Baptist Church. Essentially, that they are donating right-of-way to help realign an intersection that is across from Stevens Road. They were going to build a road that would have been about 100 feet north of Stevens Road, which for the next 50 years, without that realignment, could have created serious traffic issues in that area. With this realignment, it will help traffic for the community, all the development in that area, and it could potentially, for future development in the Hardwick area, they would also be able to access that. They're giving us significant right-of-way for this agreement in exchange that we have to build a section of this street where this, not the whole street, but just the first part of it, of where it would go into Stewart Road. Authorizing, item M, which is a motion authorizing the city staff to submit an application for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Initiative Grant. Item N is a motion authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Lee University regarding street closures and traffic control. Item, and these are items that are the public hearings. A, B, C, D, E, and F are all public hearings that we had already made. Any questions on any of those items?
Any comments or questions from the council?
I think we're on track to, is David still here? Are we going to hit our 13th date with Stewart Road?
As of today, it's.
Yes, so, we have, we have one light up, and then, we're trying to figure out how to connect the light to that pole. Was that the holdup? So, they're looking for ways to get that on there. They're working with CU to get that. I've asked them to do everything they can to make sure that that happens. We'll certainly convey that to TCPS. But I think everything's in place, it's just getting that connection of that light to a telephone pole that's out there. And the reason that it needs to be connected like that, and I think this is an important piece, is that there are significant force mains that go alongside that road. That force, that light would be about significant way off the road, and there's nowhere to put it, so you have to attach it to a pole. Cleveland Utilities was kind enough to give us authority to do that. We're just trying to figure out how to, what's the best way to attach that on there. Did I get that right, David?
Perfect.
We talked a little bit before on, at the last meeting, on Peerless and 25th Street. David had met with them. There's a backorder on some of the materials that they need, so that could be pushed out several months, and we'll keep you updated as we find out the dates of getting those materials to be, to come to Cleveland through the Wright Brothers. Trying to think of anything, trying to do everything we can to get the comp studies scheduled in the next couple of weeks. We'll give you a date and time on that when we get everything scheduled. Besides that, I think everything's going pretty well, and happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from the council, from Mr. Fibas? All right. Thanks very much for that review and report. Takes us to our reports from council members. We begin in the fourth district. Councilman May.
I'll wait till three.
Yes, sir. Councilman Goff.
None.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Webb.
I'll wait till three, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman-at-large, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman McKenzie.
I'll wait till three.
Great. Councilman Estes and Councilman Cassidy are not with us. Takes us to announcements of which there are none, which means miraculously, we stand adjourned.